I called him a specimen. Yes. Yes.
Podium mic check.
Hi, Kathy is on camera.
Do you need me to do it again?
Podium mic check. Okay. Commissioner Howell, mic check. Commissioner Lopez, mic check. Commissioner Beatty, mic check. Commissioner Dennis, mic check. Commissioner Meister, mic check. Justin Wagner, mic check. County Clerk, mic check. Tom Stoles, mic check. One minute. Thirty seconds. Nine, eight, seven, six.
Well, good morning, everybody. Good to see you. Welcome to the Sedgwick County Board of County Commissioner Meeting. I want to welcome everybody that's joining us online, those on social media, YouTube and Facebook, those on our television partner, KPTS, and those that are joining us here in person. We're glad that you're here today. I want to thank you also for your flexibility in allowing us to delay this meeting to start at 9:30. We were over at the American Red Cross Tribute to Heroes Breakfast and Presentation. It was fantastic. It's very important for us individually and as a Board of County Commission to be able to support the American Red Cross and to elevate their issues and their causes that they contend for. Their role in this community is desperately needed. So it was important for us to be there. So thank you for your patience in allowing us to push the start date, start time back to 9:30. We certainly appreciate that. When you walked in this morning, you could have got a meeting agenda packet. We also encourage you to follow along as we go. It'll be a straightforward meeting. We're going to follow the agenda in order. You can also look at all the supporting documents we have access to at sedgwickcounty.org. We encourage you to follow along as we go. Okay, let's officially call this meeting to order for Wednesday, December the 11th, 2024. Let's get to work. Madam Clerk, first item.
Invocation to be led by a moment of silence. Please remain standing for the flag salute.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Roll call. Commissioner Meitzner.
President.
Commissioner Dennis.
President.
Commissioner Howell.
President.
Commissioner Lopez. Chairman Beatty.
President. Next item.
County announcements.
Good morning, Nicole.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Nicole Gibbs of Strategic Communications. I'd like to take this opportunity to introduce the new Public Information Officer at the Sheriff's Office. His name is Brandon Stitt, and he's also here for county good news to talk about the sheriff food boxes that went out last week. Sir?
Brandon, welcome.
Thank you, Nicole. Brandon Stitt with the Sheriff's Office. So thank you for the opportunity to speak, and I definitely thank the Sheriff's Office for affording me this opportunity to serve as their Public Information Officer. So for the county good news, last week, we had our annual food box drive. It started on Wednesday, and we met at Dylan's Warehouse in Goddard. There were the Fire District Representatives and the Sheriff's Office, and even Harvey County packaged over 800 boxes. Those boxes were distributed to residents here in Sedgwick County. And to actually see that happen was something that can only be viewed in a video. So I have one I want to show you guys.
Each family is getting two boxes. We're delivering 800 boxes to 400 families in the Central County area.
One of the biggest things why I volunteered was I was one of the families growing up back home that received a box for Thanksgiving, at least.
This is probably my favorite part of the year. We get hugs, we get tears, we get laughter. I mean, it's truly fantastic to see the emotion.
I'm so half happy and I'm thankful, and I thank the sheriff department for delivering me this food because I be struggling.
It's life-saving. It's just really caring. You know, it shows that there are people out there that do care.
I understand, you know, times are tough, and then I have a passion to help people, so that is why I volunteered this year.
I think it has just as much effect on us in law enforcement as it does to the community.
And the Benefit Fund is actually who puts on this program. And we have representatives of the Benefit Fund with us today. I have Sergeant Robbie Hefner and also Detective Bressard. And also, we can't forget Audrey Beard. She's our Administrative Supervisor in Investigations. And this would not have been possible without Audrey's organization skills. She literally made this hall happen. So I'd like to invite Robbie Hefner up to the podium to actually say a few words in how the community can continue to offer their support for this program.
Okay, wonderful. Hey, good morning. Welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners. I appreciate you having us up here and allowing us the opportunity to talk about this program. This program's been going on for over 30 years now. It's been always put on by the Sheriff's Office Benefit Fund. So those that don't know, the Sheriff's Office Benefit Fund is an employee assistance program. It's actually a separate program from the Sheriff's Office, but the sheriff's always been very supportive in allowing us to run this program and have this opportunity to be able to deliver these boxes to the community. So again, we've been doing this program for over 30 years, and this year, again, we delivered 400 boxes to the community. We had, or I'm sorry, 400 families over 800 boxes to the community. Each family gets two boxes. In those boxes, it's not just one meal. This is not just a, we're going to give you a holiday meal. This is food that can last for over a week. It's all non-perishable items. So one of the great things that we've done over the last couple of years is we have reached out to our schools in Sedgwick County. A lot of, over half the names are actually coming from those schools. So those are families that the schools have recognized could benefit with kids being out of school, maybe not getting those lunches, breakfasts that are afforded to them there, and could really benefit from these meals over the next week or two that they're off of school. So over half our names are coming from the schools these days. The rest of them are coming from the community. They're coming from law enforcement who's had some sort of encounter with a family and said they could really benefit from this, or fire, EMS, or our child advocacy centers, things like that. And so we are getting all those names from our local community who've recognized, hey, these families could really benefit from this this time of year. So hopefully that's, you know, $100 worth of food that's going to a family. They can take $100 and maybe spend it more on kids over Christmas, or maybe pay that extra bill. So it's also our favorite time of the year as well, because we get to go out and deliver these. Most time, law enforcement, we're dealing with people on one of the worst days of their lives. So we get the opportunity to really deliver these, and it has such a significant impact to us as well as law enforcement, to be able to see those smiles and the cries and get in the hug. So it's truly a great benefit to us. This is 100%. This program is 100% done through donations. So all the funds come from donations from the community. And obviously, over the years, the price of the food has gone up. We sponsor, or we partner with Kroger. They give us all the food it costs. They provide us the facility. They box it up. And the Sheriff's Office Benefit is the one that actually pays that food bill. So it's 100% done through donations. So the QR code that we presented is how the community can help. They can scan that card. They can donate money. All that money goes 100% to the food boxes.
Wonderful. Beautiful. Commissioners, any questions on this? I would just say, when you, 400 families, that's a significant amount of people impacted. And to see the testimony of the lady and her family, that's powerful, very powerful. So thank you, Sergeant. Is that correct?
Yes.
Sergeant, Audrey, thank you guys so much for all that you guys do. We appreciate the work. This is a big deal, and I appreciate the sheriff and his leadership in this and allowing the flexibility of this fund to be used to really impact families this time of year. So beautiful story.
We appreciate your time. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I want to add one more thing. Just as I leave, we appreciate the county's help with this. Nicole and her team made the production. We obviously got a lot of people to talk. It was, we loved seeing that. So I want to say, Nicole, thank you. Also, Kevin, Sarah, Robyn, Stephanie, everyone that helped us. We appreciate it. Thank you.
You're pretty good in there. I would just say too, Brandon, before you go, we're really glad the sheriff puts you in this position. I think you have a really unique background. A lot of people may not know your background. You have a background in law enforcement. I first met you as a Mays police officer. But then you also have a background in media. So to actually have you in the Sheriff's Office in a unique role where you're with public information, but your law enforcement background, you're a perfect guy for the job. I know the sheriff is delighted having you there, and I think you're going to do a great job. You've already turned out some really good content. We've all acknowledged and noticed. So congratulations. We're glad you're there.
Thanks, Chairman.
Okay.
Thank you.
I too would like to echo what the chairman said. We're very excited to have Brandon on our team, and we include them, all of our communications folks across the county in our team. I'd also want to point out one last time that here on the screen, we have a QR code. If anybody in the community would like to support the Sedgwick County Sheriff's Office Benefit Fund for their food boxes annually, you can scan that code here. Before this year, it has been solely funded by the Sheriff's Office, so they graciously allowed us to open it up to the community so that more can benefit from this. And that's all I have for today.
Okay, wonderful. Wonderful announcement. That's some good news. Any questions for Nicole? Saying none, thank you. Appreciate you.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Public Agenda.
Okay, one person has signed up for Public Agenda. It's Mr. Andrew Crane, the guiding pause. Mr. Crane, if you can give the name and address for the record. Welcome.
Good morning. Andrew Crane, Guiding Pause ICT, 250 West Douglas Avenue in Wichita, Kansas here. I am here to bring to your attention a big issue that is probably going to be brought up on access and making restaurants and other facilities ADA with the push buttons. All doors, right now, if you go to any restaurants like Starbucks, there's not a push button. And under the ADA Act, there's nothing in there that says about access to have restaurants put in an actual ADA push button door. And this got brought up because there was a gal that called the city and the county both to get an actual push button at a Starbucks. And so the, why I bring this up to your attention is there's nothing in the ADA Act, there's nothing in the County ADA Act, or in the City of Wichita ADA Act. And so I think, and I was just in a five-minute meeting with Senator Jerry Moran's office and that. So I would like to see us kind of work together with the Access Advisory Board on this big-time issue so we can get accessible doors for the disabled and blind community here in Central County and in Wichita.
Okay. Andrew, thank you for your comments, always in your advocacy. Commissioners, any questions for Andrew? Okay, but we'll follow up, make sure. HR takes the ADA compliance very, very seriously, so we'll make sure that the things you've said, we'll make sure we have a discussion. Thank you, bud. Okay, that's all for public comment. I will move, I'll make a motion to receive and file.
Second.
A motion, a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Hi.
Commissioner Dennis.
Hi.
Commissioner Howell.
Hi.
Commissioner Lopez. Chairman Beatty.
Hi. Next item, please.
Retirement, item A, recognition of Sedgwick County retirements.
Okay, Sheena, good morning.
Good morning. Sheena Schmetz, Chief Human Resources Officer. Today with me is our retiree Karen Bailey. She has worked for Sedgwick County for 22 years. Karen was born and raised in Wichita, Kansas, and educated in Wichita Public Schools. Karen graduated later in life from WSU College of Liberal Arts with a degree called Field Major in Criminal Justice, Business, and Sociology. Although the career goal was to be an interpreter and work in some type of international business world, Karen answered an ad in the paper for a clerk slash teller in the city treasurer's office and began a life of public service. There were multiple positions in treasury, which provided her a lot of background, city knowledge, and Karen was encouraged to apply and became the city clerk for the city of Mays. Karen learned that the city clerk wears many hats and performs a multitude of tasks. Karen transitioned to work at Sedgwick County Clerk, Sedgwick County Public Works, and the city of Goddard again as the city clerk, and eventually was appointed to Chief Deputy County Clerk, where she has been for four terms with the current county clerk, Kelly Arnold. Karen is retiring on December 12th, 2024, after 42 years of public service and has thoroughly enjoyed working with citizens in her various roles in local government. Now Karen is seriously looking forward to more travel time to continue visiting many countries and learning different cultures. She shares a country house with her young micro sheepadoodle named Nisa. Mesa. Mesa. Karen, congratulations on your retirement. Have your certificate. And also this picture.
Yeah, wonderful.
Isn't that pretty?
What a gift.
Very nice. Would you like to say?
Karen, would you like to say something?
Oh, you know it.
Yes.
You just can't shut me up. Thank you for the recognition. I deeply appreciate it. Just having the opportunity to speak to the chairman and commissioners is a good chance to brag about what we do in public service. And although I didn't want to start out in public service, it happened, and I don't think I went wrong. There's a lot to do at either a small city, a large city, a county. I also didn't mention it, but I had 12 years with the United States Postal Service, working part-time to supplement my government jobs. So I've worked a lot of different jobs, and I've enjoyed every piece of it. And I'm happy to report out to all of you that our office likes to work with the public. We still answer the phone. We don't have a recording, and a big part of our team is here. Even one of our retirees is here, and I'm so grateful that they share this day with me, and I look forward to tomorrow. It's going to be a big party, and I hope that y'all have a chance to come by for my reception. I just want to say thank you to everybody, and especially the county clerk's office, because they've been good to me.
Very good. Karen, hang tight. Real quick, Commissioner Howell.
Well, Mr. Chairman, Kelly and I were talking about this earlier. I think we'd like to deny your chance to quit. We don't need you.
It's too late. I gave a year and a half notice.
I don't know what we're going to do without you. I mean, honestly, Kelly, you know, he's a great figurehead, but he doesn't really know. I'm just kidding. Actually, you're the one that seems to know what's really going on over there. I mean, yeah, we're all a great staff, but she is the one that really is the unbelievable expert in all that you do in that office. And so I'm sure you guys will find a way to get around this devastating news. But I do appreciate the fact that you've given us 22 years. You're an amazing person.
Thank you.
I'm incredibly impressed with your talent and your professionalism. You have done an amazing job, and I can't say enough good things about you. So I wish you the best. I'm sad for us. I'm sorry for Kelly, but we're going to get around it. We'll find a way to pick up the pieces without you somehow. I don't know how we're going to do that. But I do wish that you have a wonderful retirement, and you deserve it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Karen is the person I go to when I don't know who else to ask the question of, and she always has the answer. I've gone to her and talked to her about townships, about cemeteries, believe it or not, and you can't believe how many questions you get on cemeteries. So she's always been there to answer my questions. I appreciate it. You're going to be missed because you've got a wealth of knowledge that we rely on each and every day. And it's kind of sad. Tomorrow, we're going to lose two critical people out of our department, out of Sedgwick County, because Annette Graham is also retiring right after you are tomorrow. So it's kind of a shame to see folks like you leave because you all have carried the county for so long, and you answer the questions that no one else knows where to go. But thank you.
Very good. Commissioner Meitzner.
Thank you, Karen. Congratulations, and it's been a joy to meet you and get to work with you and your professionalism with the customers and your influence with the staff on their courtesy. And we see others walk in, and they're always so kind to the public. So the customer service, you all should be proud of. I don't know who the life coach is in that, but I assume Karen has had a great influence in that. And so thank you, and you will be missed, but we will go on. I think it's not, I don't, the word devastating was used earlier by, and I don't think it's quite so devastating. We will pick up the pieces and move on. So anyway, congratulations to you and thank you and the staff for your influence on the staff, and it's noted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lopez.
Thank you so much. It's always a bittersweet day when we lose someone as great as you, who's got the knowledge base that you do. I mean, how do you replace that? You've got some really big shoes to fill in your absence. But I just want to thank you for everything that you do for the county and for our community. But I just want to thank you for everything that you do for the county and for our community, and always being there to answer any of our questions whenever they come up. I know sometimes we get some doozies, and it's just appreciated that we know that we have someone that we can count on. So it's going to be a big loss for the commissioners, but it'll be a big loss for our community to have you too. So thank you for all of your years of service to our community.
Thank you.
Karen, we're grateful. And I know everybody that's here to support you today. They're here because you've had not just an imprint on that office, but an imprint in their lives. And I think I know a little bit about your story here the last few years, and you were actually going to retire previously. But that office, the clerk's office, needed you, and you pushed off retirement in order to sacrifice not just for the clerk's office, not just for our county clerk, Kelly Arnold, but for this community. And I think that's, I think people should know that, that you've delayed this in order to make sure that your office was in good hands as you and your role was in good hands. And I think it is in good hands. Angela John is going to take over the role, correct?
Right.
Your role. And you've been training in that role and working alongside her to make sure she's ready to go immediately, what, the last year, I think? So I just want you to know, all the comments have been made from the commission are heartfelt because you have played an incredible role for the stability of Cedric County government in so many ways. You are the local expert on townships. You are the conduit for us on the townships. And we've been razzing Kelly, like, what are you going to do? What are you going to do? And he just laughs, but because there is a good plan in place with Angela. But I think the biggest, the biggest loss is the personal loss, is because you've had such an incredible personal role, not just to the people in that office, not just to the citizens of Cedric County, but our but our county clerk. I know he trusts you, and he appreciates the sacrifices that you've made to serve this community, as we all do, 22 years. So congratulations. We're happy for you. Travel, take, is it Nisa, right? Is Nisa the pup?
Nessa.
Nessa, Nessa. Take that pup everywhere you go, enjoy it, and time well served here. We're grateful for you.
Thank you very much. I think I want to end by saying that every day is an opportunity to do good, and I think that we all come to work with that in mind.
I believe it.
And I really like what I do, and I've appreciated all the time I've had. Thank you so much for your comments. It's very kind.
Well, come up here, we're going to get a picture with you from behind the thing. Is that, is that okay, Rob?
With the flag.
Oh, we got to vote. Are we voting to affirm her retirement? Is that what we're doing?
No, yeah, I'd like to not do that.
I don't think you get that opportunity.
I just wanted to get the, I'm making a motion to receive and file.
Commissioner Jim Howell has made the motion to receive and file. I'll second that motion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
No.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
I suppose.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Come on up. We'll push our chairs back and let her come up front here. Why don't you push your chair back, and she can come up front. There you go. Come on up. Squeeze it in.
This is good?
Yes.
Good, thank you.
Congratulations. I'm happy for you. Okay. Now that we've done the retirement ceremony there, the county clerk's office can reopen back up for the constituents of Cedric County?
We never close.
That's right. Thank you again, Karen. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Appointments, item B, accept the resignation of Daniel Bateman from the Cedric County Juvenile Corrections Advisory Board.
Mr. Justin Wagner.
Thank you, Chairman. Justin Wagner, our county councillor. This item is to accept the resignation of Daniel Bateman, who's Commissioner Meitzner's appointment to the Cedric County Juvenile Corrections Advisory Board. The recommended action is to accept the resignation.
Okay, Commissioner Meitzner.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Daniel Bateman, he's not here, but he's still involved in the community, and he's done a nice, a very nice job on this Citizens Advisory Board. He will be missed, but life goes on. So thank you, Daniel, if you're watching, for your service and appreciation, and we will be seeing you soon on other things.
Very good.
Make a motion to accept the resignation.
Okay, I'll second the motion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Next item, please.
New business, item C, setting a public hearing for the proposed adoption of the 2024 International Fire Code and Amendments.
Okay, Fire Marshal Brad Crisp.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brad Crisp, Fire Marshal of Cedric County, Fire District One, for the record. Well, I've come before you today to present the ideas and to ask for a public meeting on the 2024 International Fire Code and Amendment Package. As you're aware, we enforce standardized codes within Cedric County, and those codes generally emanate from what is called the ICC or the International Code Council. Those are best practice codes, and we adhere currently to the 2018 International Fire Code along with those locally amended, locally adopted amendments. Every three years, the ICC puts out a new version of those code standards, and every six years, we sit down with MABCD as well as others and review those codes. We make recommendations for amendments, and then we ask for you to adopt them. Our work this year started in early 2024 with MABCD as well as some others, because the building code is kind of the parent code to the fire code. We share two very important chapters with the building code, Chapter Nine, which deals with fire protection systems, and Chapter Ten, which deals with exiting. The new code does provide for adequate protection of the public's health, safety, and welfare. It does not unnecessarily increase construction costs. It does not restrict the use of new materials, products, or methods of construction, nor does it give preferential treatment to particular types of classes of materials, products, methods, or method, I'm sorry, or methods of construction. So the steps that we took to get to this point, Commissioners, is pretty long. That's why it takes almost a year. We began meeting with MABCD as well as those internal stakeholders, and we talked about what was good with the code, what needed to be tweaked, what needed to be changed. We worked closely with the overall Board of Code Standards and Appeals, as well as our fire service partners in the area, and of course, probably most importantly, our industry professionals. That includes architects, engineers, builders, developers, both on the commercial and residential side, as well as others. We took those ideas and recommendations to a number of other boards for their consideration, including our very own Fire Code Board of Standards and Appeals. We've had intimate discussions with the Wichita Area Builders Association, and we have their approval. We took it before our SCFD Steering Committee and have received their approval. And of course, I'm coming before you today to set a public meeting and to get your final approval eventually here in January. I will still need to send my code amendment package to the state Fire Marshal's office for their review and approval, but I'm not going to do that until I have your seal of approval. So the overall package, Commissioners, there are 85 amendments. Forty-seven of those amendments come directly out of the building code. You've already seen those, you've already approved those through Chris Libram and MABCD. I eliminated 29 of our antiquated amendments, got them out of there. So of the of the 85 amendments, 47 are from the building code, 39 of them are simply for clarification or to help better define an issue. Twenty-six of my amendments are less restrictive than what is written in the code. Nobody really wants to talk about those, but 14 of them are more restrictive, and I'm going to spend just a very brief period of time giving you a synopsis of what that means. And then finally, seven of my amendments are basically state requirements for fireworks and explosives. So the clarification piece, we were asked, Commissioners, by our steering council, to look at doing something different for fees charged in those entities that are outside of the taxing district of the fire district. So think of places like Nenaskah Township, as well as Grand River Township, and these are just examples. They don't pay fire district mill levies, and so, but we still have to do plans review and service drive inspections for those areas, and they get charged the same as everybody else. So our steering council asked us to address that, so my recommendation is that we double those fees. The examples that I'm giving you today is a service drive in the Nenaskah Township area around Clearwater would go from $75 to $150. And a plans review fee, the multiplier would double from .0012 to .0024 on project valuation. So the example that I would give there is on $100,000 project valuation, the cost would be $240 to review those plans instead of 120. And those are only for areas outside of our taxing boundaries. On the more restrictive list, Commissioners, in Section One and Section Three, it speaks specifically to bonfires and open burning. The code is written only requires 50 feet of clearance to people's homes and structures. We've increased that distance to 100 feet, and that is a longstanding amendment, Commissioner. In fact, all of these are longstanding amendments that we've increased. There's really not any surprises in here. These have been in place for a very long time. In Section Nine, we're asking for the protection of exterior riser rooms to keep those sprinkler systems from freezing in inclement weather. In Section 903, we are going to ask for a third exit and a fire alarm in lieu of a sprinkler system for assembly type occupancies, think of places like restaurants and taverns and bars. We've also asked for those window dimensions to continue to be 30 inches by 48 inches. Those help firefighters facilitate entry into buildings, homes, and rescue to get people out of those homes through those larger window openings. In Section 912, we've asked for enlarged, this is a new one, we asked for enlarged lettering for fire department systems, think of like a sprinkler system where we hook up at a fire department connection. The lettering is required by code to be one inch high, and we're asking for it to be four inches high. We've had those practices in place for a long time, just not in the code. You can't see a one inch high lettering from the street if you're a firefighter looking for that hookup, and so we're asking for them to be four inches. In Section 506, Commissioners, we don't allow hazardous materials, vehicles to park in residential neighborhood, congested areas, and also places like around schools or hospitals, places like that. It needs to be at least 500 feet away from those areas, and we'd like to continue to have that amendment in place. And then finally, Commissioners, in Section 500610, that deals specifically with fireworks and explosives, and specifically with illegal discharge, possession, seizure of explosives, and unlawful acts. And we'd like to continue to keep those amendments in place. I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have, and of course, at the appropriate time, I'd recommend that you set a public hearing for the proposed adoption of the 2024 International Fire Code and the approved amendments, and then direct the county clerk to publish the notice of public hearing in the official county newspaper.
Okay, very good. Thank you so much. Commissioners, we've been briefed on this. We appreciate the elaboration here this morning as well for the public. Any questions or comments for Brad? Okay. The job here today, set the public hearing. So if we have any other questions in the interim, we'll make sure we reach back out directly. Appreciate all the work. This is, you're right, a year process. You've worked really hard on this, so we appreciate that.
Thank you. Thank you all very much.
I will make a motion to set the public hearing for the 8th day of January 2025 at 9:00 AM, and direct the county clerk to publish the notice of public hearing in the official county newspaper.
Second.
A motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. See you January 8th. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item.
Item D, consideration of American Rescue Plan Act spending plan update and authorized resolutions related to revenue replacement in the county capital improvement plan.
Morning, Lindsay.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. For the 16th time, not exaggerating, I did count, 16th time I'm here to talk to you about an ARPA spending plan, but in what could be a truly momentous occasion, this could be the last time you have to vote on it. So, right? I know, yes, standing ovation. So we will cover the spending plan, but before we get into that, because this could potentially be the last big presentation I do about this, I want to make sure we recap where we've been. I will tell you, as I was reviewing materials last night to remind myself of where we've been, it was quite, quite the trip down memory lane, and not necessarily a good one, so I'm very happy about today. So just as a reminder, ARPA was actually passed on March 11, 2021. It allocated $350 billion to states, local governments, tribal governments, and territorial government. January 6, 2022, but until April 1, 2022, so a full year after ARPA was passed. So I want to remind you of all of that, because that all led into why we wound up having 15 different discussions about your ARPA spin plan over the last few years. Then, of course, because nothing can stay the same, we like change very much in government, another interim final rule was then issued last December, December 20, 2023, on what constituted an obligation. And then, of course, we played a waiting game where we wanted, you know, a final, final rule, not an interim final rule. But on March 29 of this year, Treasury said, not going to happen, we're not going to give you a final rule, we're going to govern through FAQs, frequently asked questions. And that document in and of itself, the FAQs, was 107 pages. So it's been an exciting adventure. And then, of course, just like with CARES in December of 2020, we had a new twist about a week and a half ago, when the Government Accountability Office put out a memo that basically said, we actually don't agree with how Treasury has interpreted either obligated or incurred. And so I will just say that the course that we're going to talk about today is definitely the safest route based on things as they have evolved. And I did bring a prop for you today, just to illustrate where we've been. This is literally the guidance and spin plans that this commission has had to look at and touch since 2021. So congratulations. I will point out that we also have had three audits in that time for 2021, 2022, and 2023. ARPA has been the subject of those audits each time, not the subject, but a subject, and we have passed with flying colors with no findings or recommendations. So your finance people, in addition to being a stellar team that can do numbers, they can read pretty well, too. So I want to take a moment to actually thank the folks who have been a part of this, because as you know, none of this stuff at this level can happen without a robust team. And so I have not ever called them out by name from this podium, and I feel like they deserve that recognition in the minutes for the formal record. And so several of them are also here with me today. Bless their hearts, and I want to make sure that we can celebrate them. So of course, we have Anisa Redd, we have Brent Shelton, Jessica Ostmeyer, Hope Hernandez, Michelle Strout, Carrie Malin, Dan Nguyen, Lori and Shaw Walter Arie, Joe Thomas, Tammy Cooley, our trooper from the legal office, Kevin Stamper, who's been with us back through CARES. And then, of course, all of this happens with departments who have been a part of it. Poor HR, I was relooking at premium pay last night. For those who were here, you can remember what a debacle executing that actually was. So a special thanks to Anna Meyerhoff Cole, who did the yeoman's load on that, Sheena Schmutz, Bethany Corral. We also have Lisette Foster in our office, Marta Kirk, Justin and Adrian in Legal. We've had specialized ARPA buyers, specialized ARPA shoppers. We have used our ERP resources, Chris Duncan and Brett Hutchinson, to prepare all kinds of reports. I pulled the report last night. You guys, there are 6,000 individual rows of data that are summarized, aggregated, and then loaded into the Treasury portal every single quarter. So we have done an interim report since this happened. We have done 11 project and expenditure reports, with one more due for 2024. We've had four performance reports. All of that information has gone to Treasury. It has been a tremendous amount of work to make sure that it's done well and in compliance with the rules. So I just want to say from the absolute bottom of my heart, thank you to everyone who has made this possible so far and who has kept us on the right track, the leadership team that has provided all kinds of support and direction and enforcement. So, and I also would be remiss without saying thank you, Commissioners, for giving us clear guidance, executing plans when we asked you, listening to the tedious rules, and supporting us. So thank you. Okay, so now we're going to jump into the actual plan. Thank you for bearing with me. So just a reminder, these were the authorized uses for ARPA. I'm not going to get into it, because with any kind of luck, this will be the last time we have to talk about it. So the last time I talked to you on October 2, your 15th spin plan, this is what you all authorized. You had $17 million in revenue replacement, 12.8 million in public health response, about 39.5 million in court backlog, and we still had about $3 million in contingency. The other areas you can see, but those were really not in flux. So what we are proposing to you is a plan that is darn near close to complete. And in the final page of the PowerPoint that's at your seats today, you have the same packet at the back that breaks each of these categories into specific lines. at the back that breaks each of these categories into specific lines. The rows themselves that feed into these totals here are shown on this page, and the final column on the very far right shows the difference from your October plan to your December plan. And I just want to spend a couple of minutes talking about key updates since October, why we think this is our final plan, if you'll bear with me. So first, obviously, we know that in November, we had an election, and that resulted in a change in presidential administrations. And knowing that we are now governed through frequently asked questions, there is no final rule, I think we're all having flashbacks to CARES, when, if you'll recall, on average, CARES guidance changed every 11 days through frequently asked questions. Our concern is that we could be back in that situation as a new administration comes in and gets settled in and figures out what its priorities and directives will be. So because of that, the safest thing that we think we can do, and we have talked about this with our National Government Finance Officers Association, we've talked with it with, about it with the federal consultants that we have used since CARES, DRS, and everyone agrees that this is the safest route, is to wrap it up by 12/31/24, even though technically the law says we could continue our obligations through 2026. So you did have four projects that were included in your last spend plan that were anticipated to go into '25 and 2026. Those are the four that are listed here on this slide. The first, obviously, is the lease for '25 and '26 for us to remain in this space. The second is the capital improvement project to install the new locks and additional cameras in the jail. And then the final two were actually with district court-related issues, one on the criminal side, one on the family law side. So on the criminal side, we did have it, or we do have a contract with the Board of Indigent Defense to provide second-chair attorneys to ensure that those more serious crimes can be prosecuted by competent attorneys who are skilled with the complexities involved in those cases. And then also, we had contracts with domestic conciliators who could help with the family case backlog. So you can see the dollar amounts listed on this slide that were associated with those projects in our '25 and '26 years. So what are we proposing to do with that? Your answer is here on this next slide. So first, what we know is that according to Treasury, the calculation they have provided is that from 2020 through 2023, based on our audits and our calculations, we have lost an aggregate total of $142 million due to the COVID-19 pandemic and its effects. We received, in Treasury, direct funding, $100.2 million. So the amount that they have calculated we lost far exceeds our current amount of loss. And that matters because if you'll recall back on one of those earlier slides on authorized uses, we can use ARPA to reimburse ourselves for the costs of traditional government services. And to date, the commission has authorized $17 million to reimburse for sheriff wages and overtime, not any of the associated payroll taxes, but just those costs in 2024. So we've already done $17 million of that. We've actually already paid $37.4 million in wages. So that leaves a balance of $20.4 million in general fund costs that have been incurred that remain to be eligible to be reimbursed. And I'm going to talk about why that matters here in a second. But you can see that total expenditures from ARPA as of Monday were $83.9 million. That means we only have $16.3 million worth of ARPA funding available to reimburse up to $20.4 million in eligible costs. So 16.3 of revenue, $20.4 million of costs, so we are more than able to take all of the remaining funding, even that that is dedicated to those future projects, reimburse ourselves for that, and then make that cash, again, cash is fungible, we've talked about that a lot lately. So that will go into the general fund and will be made available then for how we want to handle this in the future. So we will have on the next slide some deadlines that we're going to ask you to approve to allow us to essentially close out ARPA this year. But as a part of that, we're asking today for you to immediately authorize a $10 million revenue replacement action. And then, immediately thereafter, take, that would go into the general fund, we would take another $5.9 million, identified here as number four, and move that into the CIP fund to pay for that sheriff lock and camera system. So that would come off of the ARPA CIP and go into your typical CIP. We also are asking that you would allow the county manager, as of the morning of December 27th, and you'll see why that date matters here on the next slide, to take any balance that's remaining, anything we have not spent on payroll or on any of the contracts that we have out that maybe come in less than we really think we owe. We want you to authorize the county manager to authorize that balance to be used for revenue replacement. So you would specifically limit it for that purpose only. So here's why that date matters. Here are the deadlines that we are asking. This gives us a little more time than what you had approved in the October plan, because now we are planning to be done this year instead of continuing it into two years. So this December 14th and this Saturday is the last date that ARPA-funded positions can stay in ARPA. So their last payroll posting will be next week. We also continue to receive bills on 2024 projects. We have what are called purchase orders that are outstanding, which is essentially a contract or a document with a company where we have placed an order for service. We have asked for all of those bills essentially to be sent in to us for any adjustments that are necessary to be made based on either, if there's a defect with a product and we have to send it back so we don't want to pay for it, or if there's a change in price because the contract stipulates for that. We want to have all of those changes made by Christmas Eve, December 24th. On Thursday, December 26th, we will have a final payment run at 10:00 a.m. that day. We do our typical check runs on Tuesdays and Thursdays at 10:00. All but one of the vendors that we are talking about right now are set up to be paid by ACH. That can take three days to clear. So we want to make sure those payments go out on December 26th, so those payments are cleared and were saved in those bank accounts before the end of the calendar year. So that's why at the end of December, end of day, December 26th, all of our records will be updated, we'll have final reports and records. So when we come in the morning of Friday, December 27th, we'll know precisely how much is left over, what is that gap between actual cost and what is available to be done for revenue replacement. And the idea would be that you would authorize the county manager to approve that gap, do that transfer, and then I would have one business day, which frankly would be by the end of Friday, to let you know what that precise figure was. So that way, you are, you're still directing that it's revenue replacement, but we don't have to have potentially a special meeting on the 27th do that. Obviously, that is a decision for the commission to make, but that is what's requested in this resolution. So today's action is a little more sophisticated than what we have traditionally asked, where we just ask you to approve a spend plan. Today, we're asking you to approve the spend plan. We're also asking you to approve the deadlines that are lined out in this PowerPoint, the authorization of that stimulus fund resolution that allows us to move the funds out of ARPA and into the general fund, and then finally, that capital improvement plan resolution that moves cash from the general fund to the CIP fund. There's going to be some necessary budget actions in '25 and '26 because of those contracts and things that we have going, so we would also use today's authorization of the spending plan to account for and allow for those. So I have talked a lot. I'm sorry, but this might be the last time you get to hear me talk about our direct allocation, but don't forget, we still have the mental health hospital, so you're not completely done with ARPA. But that's more of the state's problem than yours. So with that, this is my recommendation, and I'm happy to stand for questions.
Okay. A lot of work has gone into this conversation in particular, how we wind this thing down and appropriate the money effectively, but within the current guidance. So thank you, and all the people that you mentioned, thank you again from the BOCC. Thank you for all the work that you did on all the ARPA and CARES stuff. Okay, there's some questions. Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with the chairman. I do thank you for everything that you've done. Besides managing the budget, which is a big task, they added on $100 million that you had to figure out how to manage that at the same time. And you did a fantastic job, and it's testament that we've never gotten dinged by the federal government once for any of the things that we've done. So I want to start off with, thank you. We appreciate you very much. I do have one question, and that's on your deadlines. You say December 14th is the last day for ARPA funding positions to remain in ARPA. My worry all along has been that people get used to these ARPA-funded positions, and they say, "Wow, we got to keep them." And now suddenly, we've got to shift them over to property tax, to the general fund. So can you tell me, are we shifting a bunch of these ARPA-funded positions that we added over to the general fund?
There are only seven positions that were authorized to your 2025 budget to remain, and those will be the only ones that shift on 12/15. All the others end that day.
Good job.
Thank you.
Second, thank you. All right. I appreciate you all very much. Thank you.
Very good. Okay, Commissioners, other questions? One question that I have, part of this recommendation, and I want to just make sure, and I'm for it, but I want to make sure I understand it, is to allow authority for the county manager to appropriate the remaining $10 million. What are some of the reasons why? We talked through this in my office. I want the public to understand why we think this is the right move.
So what you are authorizing today is an immediate transfer of $10 million. And so if you look at that back page again, we'll refer you back to this one. So what you'll see is on row 27, for right now, we only have $4.557 million in unallocated budget. But what you'll see in each of the rows above are dollar amounts. These are estimates for what the final payroll will be. They're tied to the final purchase orders that are still outstanding. So as of today, I cannot tell you with certainty what the last dollar will be that is spent on ARPA and what is available for revenue replacement until we get to that December 26th date, when that final check run is done. We still have a lot of work, a lot of work, it's stressing out our team quite a bit to get this wrapped up. And so I'm just not in a position today to tell you precisely what that dollar figure is. So in lieu of having this commission get together and have another commission meeting, we know that this is likely, the dollar amount, it could vary slightly. And so because of that, because we do have a pretty good idea, because we do know that we want it to be revenue replacement, we think it is appropriate for the county manager to have that authority, because you have directed how it's to be spent. It's just authorizing that specific dollar amount, because under state law, when we transfer cash between funds, we have to have a resolution that authorizes it. And so without having that specific resolution ready for you Friday, the 27th, for you to vote on, we need to have the resolution that caps the amount and gives him the authority to do it.
There you go.
So does that answer it?
It does. And we talked about that ad nauseam. It was the $7 million, not the 10, that I was talking about, forgive me, but it's very good reasons. I wanted the public to understand exactly what some of these actions and the reasoning behind it, so. Okay, Commissioners, any other questions for Lindsey? Okay, seeing none. I move to approve the updated spend plan that completes ARPA spending in 2024 and associated actions, adopt the attached stimulus fund transfer resolution, and adopt the attached capital improvement plan resolution.
Second.
A motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Well done.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you again, Lindsey. Appreciate it. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item E, Report of the Board of Bids and Contracts, regular meeting on December 5th, 2024.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Lee, good to see you.
Good to see you. Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners, Lee Barry, or Purchasing Department. The regular meeting, Board of Bids and Contracts for December 5th, 2024, resulted in five items which require your approval. Item number one is the Stryker Life Pack Lucas Pro Care Field Repair Agreement for Emergency Medical Services. And the recommendation was to accept the quote from Howmedica Osteonics Corp., DBA Stryker Cells LLC, in the amount of $250,449.75. Our second item was radio encryption for emergency communications. That recommendation was to accept the quote from Motorola Solutions in the amount of Item number three, snow plow blades for public works, and that recommendation was to accept the quote from Master Tech Truck and Equipment. We would be utilizing Sourcewell Contract Number 06222-AEB in the amount of $55,713. Item number four is a one-ton, four-wheel-drive, crew cab, flat-bed fuel lube truck for fleet management in public works. The recommendation was to accept that bid from Parks Motors in the amount of $77,721. And item number five was for the 2025 recommended insurance renewals for risk management. The recommendation is to accept the insurance premium renewals as listed for an estimated cost of $514,102. And that's all the items we have for today, and I'm happy to stand for any questions.
Okay, thank you, Lee. Appreciate it. Commissioners, any questions on bid board? Okay, seeing none, I'll move to approve the recommendations of the Board of Bids and Contracts for December 5th, 2024.
Second.
Motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Next item, please.
Consent agenda.
Manager Stoltz.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioner Tom Stoltz, County Manager's Office, recommending of approval of items, consent items F through U on the general agenda this morning.
Okay, Commissioners, on the consent agenda, any questions? Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I'd like to pull items L and M. I'll approve them, but I want to talk about them.
Okay, so we'll pull those for discussion. Commissioner Howell.
I was going to just say, I'd like to have just a little bit of discussion without pulling the items, but I'd like to talk just a little bit about, I have a couple of questions on F and, on item F, and I think on item G.
F and G, okay. So why don't we go ahead and approve the consent agenda, and we'll come back for those four items. So I move to approve the consent agenda with the exception of items F, G, L, and M.
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Okay, let's, Manager Stoltz, do you want to take these in order? Okay, so item F, go ahead, Manager.
You want to start? I've got Brent Shelton and Lynn Packer ready to talk about F, and I think we can probably catch yours, too, Commissioner, so we can start with L. Or, I'm sorry, F.
F. Yeah, Commissioner Howell?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a number, on item F, this is to benefit, I think, Charlotte Pipe. This is a turn lane. I guess I'm just surprised about a couple of things. Was there any discussion about sharing this expense with them, since this is really for them? I don't know where we're at on this. I support this. I mean, I'm not saying I don't support it. I just like to know, you know, how did this happen to be a $1.5 million expenditure for a turn lane? And I don't know where this came from necessarily.
So Commissioner Howell, rest of the Commissioners, for the record, I'm Brent Shelton, your Deputy CFO. This would be the turn lane to facilitate the construction of the Charlotte Pipe project in Mays. It's part of a KDOT grant, so some of the cost share there is with us and the city of Mays and then KDOT.
Okay, so there is some other sources of revenue then?
Yes.
Okay. Was this a, was this a non-ex? I'm sorry.
I was just going to make a correction that the, what this item is, is a judicial right-of-way at the cost of $1,500, $1,500.
Oh, well, okay, item F, let's go back and take a look at that. You are right, that's a lot different. I don't know why I read that. $1.5 million, I mean, I was like, wow, that's a lot. Anyway, so. You are right. That's a lot different. I don't know why I read that. I thought 1.5 million. I mean, I was like, wow, that's a lot. Anyway, so thank you for, no wonder I was surprised. Well, I have no concern on that at all. That's awesome. But the next one, I do have.
Item G, yes.
Next one, I don't think I'm off on the zeros on this one. This is, it looks like they're going to improve, I think, two miles between 69th North and 85th Street North, a widening project, and then paving the shoulders. I guess I'm just curious about, there are a lot of two-lane roads around the county, and I don't know why this one necessarily is different than any other two-lane roads. I think about some of the two-lane roads in District 5, and I'm just kind of wondering, how do I get this type of improvement on some of the roads I think are extremely heavily traveled? I'm thinking about Greenwich, for example, between 63rd Street and Pawnee as an example, where there has been a lot of injury accidents, there have been fatalities. It is not a very safe road. The shoulders basically are on existent steep ditches. And I, you know, I just think for the number of cars on that, this one, I didn't know if it's on the long, again, I don't memorize the CIP list. This may have been on the CIP for a number of years. And that's really my question, is, is this on our CIP list, or is this something that's been, I guess, inserted?
No, this has been in the CIP for more than five years.
Okay.
And it's been coming. And this is the first of what will be, or hopefully be, many more projects that will include adding shoulders. All of our projects that are reconstructing roads, as well as our bridges to some minor extent, have been adding wider roads, shoulders onto the roads. This one is the first that we've done this dedicated to strictly adjust the ditches and the shoulders, but we will be seeing more in the future.
And I think, I think, I think getting right-of-way in widening the shoulders, even if we didn't pave them, would be a huge improvement. There are, one of my concerns about Greenwich, again, is not related to this, I'm supportive of this one, just a comment, is that Greenwich, there's a lot of bicyclists that have a right to be on the road, and highway speeds of cars going up and down that road is just, it's worrisome to me to know that there's really not a place for bicyclists to go that are maybe outside the lane of traffic. And it's just, it's a concern. And of course, we know that congestion going to Derby, a lot of folks will, will go over to Web Road or to Greenwich to avoid Rock Road, and so the traffic is just continuing to go up. And again, if it takes five years to get this type of improvement, I would like to know, we can talk later, but whether we can get some, some attention to those two roads, especially Web Road and Greenwich, because we, I have, I guess, I am concerned a little bit about the, the number of tra, the traffic appears to be pretty high, and the number of accidents is pretty high, anecdotally. So I guess I'd just, I'd like to ask you, ask you to have a discussion in the future about that. I'm glad to see this one on here. I do think it's a better configuration. I wish it wasn't so much money, but that's beside the point. I'll support the item, and I haven't a reason to vote differently on this, and so I would, I would encourage a motion later on to adopt all four of these items if that's agreeable with everybody else. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Moving on, item L, Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. Actually, I want to talk about L and M, but I also want to talk about I, J, K, and A. We've already approved those. The reason I want to mention all these is that Public Works has done a great job, and I want to congratulate them and thank them for what they've done, because for too long a time, why, we've had cities annex land, but then they don't take the road. And so suddenly, the Sedgwick County taxpayers are having to maintain a road that really should be maintained by the city. And so I've had conversations with Public Works several times, trying to see what we can do to rectify that. And so actually, I, J, K, L, and M are all rectifying that problem where the city has annexed property right next to the road, but didn't take the road. So I don't think that it's right that Sedgwick County taxpayers should maintain a road that is adjacent to property that's been annexed. The reason I want to talk about L and M is because Lynn Packer and I have had numerous discussions with the City of Goddard on it. I'm going to approve these, I'm going to vote, move to approve these at the end, but I've talked to the, to the mayor, I actually talked to him again yesterday, of Goddard. And what L and M creates is, on 167th Street, it creates on the east side, because Wichita has all except for 1,000 feet between Maple and Kellogg. Wichita has everything but 1,000 feet on the east side. Sedgwick County has the next 1,000 feet on the east side. On the west side, Goddard has the entire mile. So what does that mean? Over a one-mile road, we have three governments trying to figure out who's going to maintain that road, who's going to clean the road in the wintertime. And I tried to explain this to the mayor a couple of times, that that's really not a good situation. His big concern, and it comes from his city manager, is that eventually, it's going to cost a lot to work on that road. Well, I tried to let him know that, right now, we've already resurfaced that road. It's good for another 10 or 15 years. Nobody's going to be touching it. We've added the turn lanes going into the school district. We're not going to have to touch it for that. We've already worked on walking paths along that. That's taken care of. So for the next 10 or 15 years, there's not going to be any additional expense, and yet we're going to be trying to figure out who's going to do minor maintenance on it, and who's going to be having to clear those roads in the wintertime. So I think, let me go one step further. Once that that road needs widening or major repair, yeah, that's going to cost a little bit of money, because it costs us right now about $1 million a mile to do something on a road. But what Goddard is doing is that they're now kind of alienating Sedgwick County and the Wichita City of Wichita. And once that that road needs work, you've got to have those two organizations, because you're going to get the money to, for the match out of Wampole. So the fact is, they're not facing a huge expense in 10 or 15 years. What they're facing is a convoluted system for the next 10 or 15 years, because of their worry that it's going to cost them a lot of money in the next 10 or 15 years. So I want to publicly ask them one more time, and I've asked the mayor a couple of times already, I know that Public Works has worked with the City of Wichita. The City of Goddard needs to annex that entire mile on both sides. That is the final solution. I can't get it done. It's not being done today in this. I don't know if Lynn has anything else to say about it, but that's the reason I pulled it, is I wanted the public to understand that Goddard is not going to come up with a huge expense for 10 or 15 years on this road. We're going to work with them in 10 or 15 years to make sure that they don't have that expense. And in the meantime, we're going to have three governments trying to maintain one-mile road. Lynn, do you have anything to add?
Yes. For the record, Lynn Packer, your Director of Public Works and County Engineer. Thank you for those words. We worked for what has been now about 12 months with 14 separate cities on these annexations, and it has been a very good experience overall, very well-received overall. We are looking at reducing our load on our highway system by about 20, I think it's going to end up being 27 miles, which is more than we previously have ever been able to done in one sitting. And these are roads that we, as Commissioner Dennis has said, and we've talked about all individually, we've been maintaining these roads that are essentially inside the cities. And it's time to, we meet about every five years to discuss what makes sense. By no means do all the roads go to the cities as soon as they, they annex them. Sometimes it just doesn't make sense from a maintenance point of view, and we review those. We've had very good relationships with our cities. In this particular case, it looks like two different roads are going out of, all the ones we talked about, will end up splitting jurisdictions. It's unfortunate, because that means two different police powers, two different Public Works entities. So you could end up, and we've had this before, with literally two different speed limits going in two different directions, different types of enforcement, different type of access controls on the same mile, just on different sides. And that's unfortunate. Hopefully, these entities will be able to come together and resolve and be on how this is going to be maintained and how that will work out, and eventually, one of them will take over and annex those roads in their entirety. We try to have that discussion with all the cities up front, so that this can be avoided. Considering all the discussions we had, and all the various agreements we've had, this is the second and last of the remaining roads that we are requesting annexation. And so we are done with this session. We probably won't discuss this again until about 2030. But I'm very pleased. I do want to note that Daniel Schrempf, my Deputy Director, has really carried the brunt of this work. I started it and kindly handed it off, and he has run with it and done an exceedingly well job, a good job with this. He has met regularly with the cities and negotiated, and really kind of just helped facilitate a lot of these. We have a lot of roads that are in between two cities, and he helped facilitate those discussions and come to agreements. So he did an absolutely wonderful job, and I definitely want to give him the recognition he deserves for that. But I also wanted to thank all of you for having these discussions, being willing to talk to the cities and your counterparts in the cities about the benefits of what this does for road maintenance and police powers, and helping us get this done. This will have a, it's not going to be immediate, but in a few years, this is going to have a real effect on our budget, our ability to maintain our roads with the budget we have.
Lynn, again, thank you. I appreciate it very much, and I should have thanked Daniel also, because I know he worked very hard on this. Thank you. At the right time, I'm ready to vote on all of these. Appreciate you.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Thank you. And Lynn, I would just want, when I, I just want to share briefly, I was going to say at our agenda meeting, but I didn't say this, but back when I was at the City of Wichita, there was a time when a former, a couple of county commissioners, not any of the current ones, but a couple of former ones, were pretty emphatic about making sure that all county roads that were adjacent just go to all the cities. And so I got involved in that a little bit and found and learned that, just what you talked about, how they negotiate and reasoning and timing, and between enforcement and maintenance and condition, and when's the timing to redo it all, and then give it at one time or another. So I really learned that, as we talk about functional consolidation in various areas, I think the Public Works Departments in Sedgwick County and in these cities have been practicing functional consolidation without being officially consolidated. And I had a lot of respect for, for the city engineer at the time, and who was the head of the county right before you?
Jim Weber.
Weber, and before the, Spears. Yeah, this is back in the Spears days. So anyway, I learned and was very appreciative, and I know that sometimes things seem convoluted when you have three government entities, your own one that included a district, the Crestview District was part, and the city was part, and county was part. It can be very difficult, and, but I think you do a nice job, and the other Public Works groups and cities do a nice job of saying, okay, that the timing is right, or it's on our plan for the next two or three CIP years. So, and Commissioner Dennis, you're exactly right, there are some that are just really difficult to work through, but, but I have, I just want to thank you and any of the cities that might be watching. I've learned, and I'm appreciative of the cooperation, you and, that you, Lynn, and Daniel do a nice job on that, so thank you.
I appreciate those words. One of the things we learned through this process is, a lot of the cities don't understand that we are continually adding roads to our system over the years. As township roads, as developments occur, and township roads are paved, those transfer from the townships over to the county. So I started here in 2000. We had about 590 miles of road on our system. We now have 603. We, and that has fluctuated really close to around the 600 for that time, even though we, this is our third time of working with cities to reduce our load on our road maintenance system. So we are continually picking up roads, and a lot of the cities don't understand, you know, we're picking up these roads, but we're not getting any more budget for doing that. So this just really does keep us even as we go through the years.
Okay. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Chairman. Just wanted to, I guess, agree with Commissioner Dennis on this. I want to say thank you for working this out, having these transferred to the proper authority to take care of these roads has been a burden for a very long time, and the fact that you brought all these forward at one time is really commendable. Great work getting that done. I know there's a little bit more work to do on that. I would just say, also, as these are being transferred, they're in very good condition, right?
Without a doubt. If we have a road that hasn't, that is due for preventive maintenance, in our view, within the next couple of years, we've agreed to go ahead and still keep that on our schedule and do that. We don't want this to be a burden for any of the cities, and we don't want it to be an immediate burden. We want them to take over a good road. We want this to, we don't want to have any situations where there's a bad taste left in any of the city's mouths over this. They, we want them to know that we're being as fair as possible, and we've already scheduled some of those roads, so we'll just keep it on our schedule, and even though they've annexed it, we'll still go in and take care of the maintenance.
And thank you. And I'm not familiar with the road that Commissioner Dennis was talking about, that by Goddard, but it does remind me, there's a, there's a similar road out in, on 159th between Harry and Pawnee. There are literally six governing bodies who have an interest in that road, and because of that, there's a lot of finger pointing going on. So on Harry, between Harry and, between Harry and Pawnee on 159th Street East, there are little two counties, two cities, and two townships that are trying to basically work together, but the people who live along that road don't get the services that they deserve. And so I have a nickname for that road, which I can't share here, but anyway, I, I do think it's a challenge, and so thank you for your good work on this. Appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Very good. Thank you again, Lynn and Daniel. Appreciate it. Okay, I'll move to approve the remaining items F, G, L, and M from the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion, a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Okay, we're going to pause the Board of County Commission meeting and call to order the governing body of Fire District Number 1 for Wednesday, December 11, 2024. Madam Clerk, first item, please.
Roll call, Commissioner Meitzner.
Present.
Commissioner Dennis.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Lopez.
Present.
Chairman Beatty.
Present. Next item.
Public Agenda.
There is no one signed up for Public Agenda in the Fire District? Next item, please.
New Business, Item A, Report of the Board of Bids and Contracts, regular meeting on December 5th, 2024.
We have Lee again. Welcome back.
So the regular meeting of the Boards of Bids and Contracts for Fire District 1 took place on December 5th, 2024 as well, and it resulted in one item which requires your approval. The current model four-wheel-drive utility-bed fire response truck for Sedgwick County Fire District 1, and the recommendation is to accept the bid from Rusty Act Ford Incorporated in the amount of $118,887. And I'll be happy to stand for any questions.
Okay, thank you, Lee. We have been briefed on this item from the Fire District, our Fire Chiefs. Any specific questions on this item? Commissioner Howell.
Mr. Chairman, thank you for the chance to speak. I'm not against buying this. This is fine. It sounds like we need a third vehicle. This is to replace one of two, and the one that's just replacing is going to go back on Purple Wave, I guess, at some point. I don't know what we would expect to get from that truck sale, but I would point out, again, I know these are, these are used pretty, they have a kind of a hard life, so I'm not saying that they're not worn, but this is, again, the age of the vehicle is surprising. It's 10 years old, but only has 110,000 miles on it, so I would say this has probably got It is a vehicle used, I guess, that the reliability of this is probably great because it's been well maintained, but it doesn't necessarily have a life and safety component. If it was, if it did ever have a, an issue, I'm not sure that there's any life and safety concerns here. I would just say, I would rather have a discussion maybe before this goes on Purple Wave about maybe retaining this vehicle for a little bit longer. I don't know if we can do that, but to me, that's really my point in speaking up. So I'm supportive of the bid board decision. I just don't know that I want to give this truck up too quickly. I think there's a need for a third truck. And so with that, my other comment would be this, and I believe you can confirm this, but the steering council did also, I guess, review this request, and they've also supported this, or do you know that?
I think Doug Williams is here. He can answer that question.
Chief's making the way around. There he comes.
Anyway, I, the bid board doesn't have to talk about Fire District very often. It doesn't happen very often. And the steering council is kind of a new thing for everybody. So generally speaking, I would want to make sure that they weigh in on this because every time we spend $120,000, that money, that money can't go towards salaries or whatever else we think is important. Go ahead, sir.
Yes, Commissioners, Doug Williams, Fire Chief. We did present our fleet plan in the whole entirety in the September Steering Council meeting. So we went through that individually as far as every truck we have on purchase and every vehicle that we have specifically to replace. So they did review the whole plan in the September meeting, and they also went over some staff vehicle purchases we had for this year back in, I believe, the April meeting. I might be wrong on that date, but it was April or March.
The bid board, they selected this, this, how many bids do we actually have? We only had, it looks like two bids, three, actually five or six, five bids maybe?
Only had one bid.
Only had one bid, okay. So again, to the extent we're going to buy a vehicle and we only had one bid, I guess there's not a lot of decisions to be made here. But I just like to, I'd like to just, I guess, empower them to speak and let them know that I want them to weigh in on these types of decisions. So again, I'm not sure that the, if our, if our purchasing processes require the bid board on this or the steering council to take that place in this, since this is Fire District purchase, I don't know if that's something we, we need to have them, bid board to do, do it for the Fire District also.
Hi. Sorry to interject myself. Lindsay Porusso, your CFO. So because Charter 68 does apply to all purchases for the county and it requires bid board, it would take a charter resolution update in order to swap that out for the Fire District. And of course, that would take a super majority vote of the commission and then the 60-day publication before it could actually take effect. Obviously, the commission can make its decision on what those charter rules look like as long as they, you know, comply with the general tenets of state law for taxing entities making purchases.
We can certainly talk about this later. And so I just, I guess, I thought to myself, the bid board is, again, it's normal for the county business, and we need them. What they do is very important to our purchasing practices and processes here. But when it comes to the Fire District, we don't do this very often. And so I don't know how, again, if it were legally required right now, that's fine. I'm not sure if we even have any good options available to us to do it differently. But I do want to activate the steering council, make sure that we, I desperately want them to weigh in on these types of decisions before we actually consider it at the board level. So anyway, again, thank you for the presentation. I'll be glad to support this as well.
Okay. Thank you, Chief. Okay, Commissioners, any other questions on this one item on the bid board? Seeing none, I move to approve the recommendations of the Board of Bids and Contracts for December 5, 2024.
Second.
Motion, a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Next item, please.
Other.
Anything under other for the Fire District? Seeing none. Next item.
Executive session.
No executive session for the Fire District, so I'll officially adjourn the meeting for the governing body of Fire District Number One. And take us back to the Board of County Commission meeting. Madam Clerk, next item.
Committee reports.
Commissioners, anything under committee reports? Seeing none. Next item.
Other.
Anything under other. Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A number of the Commissioners this morning attended the tribute to heroes, and that's why we moved the meeting to a later date. We got to hear about disaster relief hero Catherine Shreve, who works for the 22nd Air Rescue Wing. And she worked during the heat of the day during the airshow and stabilized a number of patients, and some of them were in very critical condition. We also heard about the gift of life, which was James and Linda Parker. Between the two of them, they've given 163 gallons of blood, and they've traveled to all 50 states to donate blood in. So they are gift of life heroes. They had the Public Servant Award, which is Lieutenant Colby Welch and with the Wichita Fire Department. And he supports people in the most time of need. Called action heroes was Kendrick Jordan, Hayden Bryant, Fabrice, sorry, I can't say his name, Laserna and Bryant Dawn. They saw a gentleman that crashed his vehicle into a creek. They went in and used the gentleman that had a kayak in the back to rescue him, to save his life. They had the National Life Saving Award, which is Pedro Maldonado. And they had a nine-year-old who was on the baseball field with League 42, and he suffered a heart condition. And Pedro saved his life as we were, they were waiting for EMS to come. But the one I want to talk about, the reason I brought this up, was the Lifetime Hero Award. And that's our own Ron Holt, who was Assistant County Manager here for Sedgwick County and also was the project director for the Untrust Bank Arena. So he was definitely worthy of the Lifetime Hero Award. So it's an honor to be there this morning. I'm sorry that we held up the meeting, but it was worth being there because we were able to recognize each and every one of these heroes. But I do want to call out Ron Holt.
That's good.
Thank you.
Yes. Congratulations to all of those heroes, including Ron Holt. Commissioner Meitzner.
Thank you. Just a reminder, there's been a lot of inquiries that this afternoon at 1 o'clock, Kansas Department of Transportation, KDOT, will be having a, anybody can attend Zoom meeting to review the latest information from KDOT on the Amtrak extension from Oklahoma City up to Newton. That'll be at 1 o'clock this afternoon. We made reference to it on our website. If anybody wants to link on, you got to sign up to do it, but it's easy to do the Zoom link. I just thank you for letting me say that.
Good. Good update. Very good. Thank you. Anything else under other? Okay. Seeing none. Next item, please.
Executive session.
We do have an executive session this afternoon. Commissioner Lopez.
The move that the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session for 20 minutes until 11:20 for the preliminary discussions related to the acquisition of real property for the purpose of discussing the potential purchase of land and buildings for use by county departments. Now, the Board of County Commissioners return to this room from executive session at 11:20.
Okay. I'll second that motion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Okay. We'll see everybody back here 20 minutes at 11:20.
Justin, last conference. Last conference, we're right over here. I'm going to send a note over to the city of Wichita.[1057.88]
Okay, we'll see everybody back here, 20 minutes at 11:20.
Justin, last conference. Last conference, we're right over here. I'm going to send a note over to City of Wichita.[538.16]